Well, thank you. Oh, thanks, Terry. Are we on? No.
Yes, they are now.
Oh, we are on. I'm Deanna Atherton, and, yes, David.
I should have realized that we're going to do this. I'm actually going to recuse myself because my employer actually owns a lot of coastline.
Yes, that's true.
And so, please note that I'm recusing myself. I'll participate in this discussion.
And the vice chair is Stephen. Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Finance Committee. It's so loud now I can hear the echo. My name is Deanna Atherton, and I am the Administrative Coordinator for the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy, which is a volunteer position. We're all volunteers, and our mission is to preserve and protect Nantucket's coastal resources. And our lead petitioner, Burton Balkine Spruce, is here. And also our advisor, Rick Atherton, who helps us with all things having to do with governmental affairs. So we're fortunate to have him. We submitted information to you in time for the Monday hearing, and hopefully you have had an opportunity to review it. And we will be happy to answer any questions. I think it's important in terms of the big picture to think about this amendment to an existing bylaw as really dealing with land use and how the town determines the process that the town goes through to use its open space. And the open space that's relative to this bylaw, Chapter 67, is town-owned coastal property, which is beachland, beach property. And what we are proposing, our article, is an amendment to Section E of the existing bylaw, Chapter 67. And what we would like to do is we'd like to make some clarifications in the language that better reflect the intent of town meeting when this bylaw was passed in 2012. And that is to delete the word "private" and to insert the words "to a non-governmental body." What this effect would do is that it would ensure that the licensing or leasing of town-owned coastal property to a private entity for erosion control purposes would require a vote of town meeting, which it does now. And the reason that we've brought this forward, and in fact, we are the ones who petitioned for a special town meeting. We did that in the couple of days in the run-up to Labor Day weekend, and we had 450 signatures. I think citizens were really reflecting a concern that citizens have about protecting our beaches. And as I think of this, the open space that the town owns is less protected than open space that other entities own, like the various conservation organizations or the land bank. As you know, it's very difficult to build on open space or to change the use of open space. And that's what the voters of town meeting recognized in 2012, and that's why they adopted this bylaw. So that it would raise the bar slightly, so that instead of just three members of the Board of Selectmen being able to do it, it would go to a vote of town meeting. So that's essentially kind of the intent of our bylaw. We did outline to you in our memo that it was always our understanding, and we were pretty clear in it, that this article would pertain to all town-owned coastal property. There are five sections in the bylaw, A through E. We're dealing with Section E. A, B, C, and D have expired. They had to do with a moratorium that expired in 2013. So our assumption was the definition of town-owned coastal property, which was limited to the eastern side of the island, was no longer operable because we believe that Sections A, B, C, and D were no longer effective. And since there wasn't a limiting definition to town-owned coastal property, that Section E, if amended, would just refer to all town-owned coastal property. So we will have to confer and see if there's a simple technical way we can address that. And if not, we'll have to bring that back in April. Does that make sense?
You're looking for this definition. Is the town attorney not chimed in?
He has, and in fact, his statement, Cliff, kind of threw us because he said his first read was that the definition in Section A was the limiting definition. When we pointed out to him that Section A was no longer operable because it had a time limit, 2013, so it expired five years ago, he said, "You have a case in point, and maybe you can rectify that with a simple technical amendment of some kind." So we will explore that, and if it can be done easily at a special town meeting, within the special town meeting, we'll do it then. If not, the team has discussed it, and we'll just bring it back in April and try and clean up the whole bylaw.
It just seems like when the town steps forward, we do.
With you, we did have a response from Town Council when we pointed it out to him, and I'd be happy to share that. We'll send the response to all of you so you can see it.
So we should assume his response was affirmative?
It was affirmative in the sense that he said, "You have a point. You have a valid point." But he wasn't, you know, he's not representing us, or he didn't. And his suggestion was, again, as I said, perhaps this could be remedied with a simple technical friendly amendment, and that we would have to confer with the town moderator to see if it was in the scope of the article. But we just wanted to communicate to you, which is we have communicated to the entire community, that our intent was to make it all town-owned coastal property and not just limited to the eastern coast, the eastern shoreline between Great Point and the Sconset sewer beds. That was the intent of that section when it was adopted in 2012 because there was really activity, possible erosion control activity planned for the public beach below the Bluff in Sconset at the time. And there is now too. So even if the limiting definition stays, it will still address sort of the area of our greatest concern. But we do feel that it should pertain to all town-owned coastal property.
And so if this change occurs, will the current arrangements with the erosion control project, the geotubes in Sconset, which, as I understand it, the town has an agreement with the homeowners, et cetera, whatever, the Beach Association, will that affect that agreement?
I don't think it will affect the agreement. In fact, I think it had always been the intention that if the expansion is approved by the Conservation Commission, and if the town does consider issuing a license to SBPF, it would have to come to town meeting for approval. Because even now, it means, the reason it didn't come in 2013 was because the word "private" was an adjective that modified erosion control purposes. And the purposes in 2013 for the 900-foot seawall was to abate emergency on northern Baxter Road. So you saw in those two opinions that we included in the information we provided for you. The opinion of Town Council was that the purposes of the temporary shorter project were both public and private. It wasn't just private. It was also public. And therefore, it didn't require a vote of town meeting. However, the expansion, which goes both north of the current structure and south, is not there to abate an emergency. The road isn't threatened, or the infrastructure isn't threatened. So our assumption would be that it would come before town meeting. However, we wanted to act now because we didn't want it to happen again, what happened in 2013, where the town might say, "Well, the purpose of this mile-long expansion is public. It's not private." So what we're just trying to do is clarify the language so that the intent of the vote of town meeting in 2012 would be adhered to.
My question is, the select board is elected by the voters of Nantucket.
Correct.
So the implication of saying it has to be an annual or special town meeting to some extent puts a very specific time block on taking actions because that's potentially once or twice a year compared to when the select board meets every other week or every week, depending on the season. So is the implication is that the select board would not take the appropriate actions they should be taking that you feel would be contrary to the town, what the general population might vote once or twice a year?
Nothing in our article would preclude the town from dealing with an emergency or installing a town project on town land. That would just be subject to the regular appropriation procedures, and that's what Town Council pointed out. This is for the licensing or leasing of town-owned public property, that's a town-owned public beach, to a private entity for erosion control. It wouldn't impinge at all on the town's ability to do anything the town wanted to do for governmental purposes. I have, Spruce or Rick, do you want to add anything?
If there's some questions, I'd be happy to try and respond. But I think it's pretty clear at the moment, at least to me, listening to the conversation and the questions, that you're focused on the issues you need to consider. You know, I've always felt one of the important things here, when the article was written in the first place, the intent was clear. And somehow, the intent wasn't followed in the way it was intended to be.
You know, it's just interesting, and I won't belabor this. And maybe you've seen these maps before, but just while we're talking about the project in Sconset, is there are town-owned parcels in Sconset that run parallel to the shoreline. And we think that they're the vestige of the lands that were laid out by the proprietors, who laid out land all around the coast and around the great ponds to assure public access to the water. And when Mr. Flag was laying out his lot in the late 1890s, he made a point of working with the proprietors that those lots up on top of the bluff would not go down the bluff into the water's edge because they wanted to preserve that beach for the inhabitants of Nantucket. So that beachland is really a legacy from the proprietors to the people of Nantucket. And town meeting in 2012 really felt that if we're going to change the use of that, if we're going to allow something to be built there, it should have the approval of town meeting.
Deanna, what's the importance of striking the language except as provided in Paragraph C, which provides a pretty narrow definition of limited pilot projects? It wouldn't be subject to this exemption.
Well, Stephen, the limited pilot project was pertaining to, again, an SBPF project. And it was to be installed during the time of the moratorium, which expired in 2013. So the limited pilot project that's referred to in that section expired in 2013.
There's nothing in this Paragraph C that includes the date, includes any reference to the area of the island, to that project. Everywhere it says "limited pilot project," it's pluralized. And again, it's a pretty narrow definition. It has to be for the purpose of collecting data, which would be useful in putting together a plan for island-wide erosion mitigation.
It was a very specific, it was for, it was an erosion control project that had a fancy name called gabions, which are wire baskets with rocks in them. And the Concom had just denied a longer such project. And Arthur Reed, on behalf of SBPF, amended this chapter at the town meeting in 2012, yes, to make this exception for this limited pilot project. But this...
But I'm sure that that contextual information is accurate. But going forward, that's not the only project that this could apply to. And it seems foolhardy to take away the town's ability to approve a limited pilot project. 400 feet is not a great stretch of beach. And it has to be for the purpose, you know, to qualify for the exemption under this Paragraph C. It would have to be under 400 feet. It would have to provide meaningful data, which would be useful in producing the coastal management plan. So I'm just looking for some rationale for why that's not appropriate to remain.
Because the coastal management plan has been completed and adopted.
Well, but plans are constantly revised. I mean, as you know, the shoreline changes, research changes, new information can come to light. Again, it just seems like that portion may be able to stay and still accomplish most or all, really, of what you're trying to do.
That's possible. It's just remained as something that's already been completed and adopted, which is the coastal management plan. The town has begun, which probably you know, a coastal resiliency plan. The coastal management plan pertained to only town-owned properties. It was a very extensive process that resulted in the adoption of the coastal management plan by the deadline of 2013. We can go back, Stephen, and look at that, but that certainly was the intent. I don't know if anyone else remembers that.
Sure, I agree with you. But the language I picked up just now reading, Stephen, so we can think about this. "Nothing herein shall prohibit the licensing by the royal selectman and construction during the moratorium period." So it seems to me quite clear that C refers to a period of time, and that period of time has expired. And I think that, I may be wrong in my interpretation. I'm happy to listen to your point of view. But I think that would kind of confirm the conversations that I've had, maybe others, with Town Council about A through D.
So then, just to follow up, if I'm getting the gist of this conversation, so then the intent of the changes would be any future private erosion control project, whether it be a test, where obviously the test would have become before a major project, anything that was a private has to have town meeting approval.
But if you're using town-owned property, unless it's the town itself doing the project, then the only approval necessary is appropriation of money and the Conservation Commission and any other types of approvals like that. But yes, it would.
What about maintenance of existing?
Maintenance of existing projects that have been approved by the Conservation are always allowed to go forward in accordance with the order of conditions issued by the commission itself. And that would apply, for example, the town has done some erosion control efforts at the end of MacKitt Road. You're familiar with that. And at the end of, what is it?
Homack Pond or Quays.
One other on the Pulpus Harbor side. So there are three areas, which they received a grant for, through town-owned property, very small, but they're erosion control projects. And they have ongoing maintenance required, which would be approved by the Conservation Commission. And this wouldn't touch any different.
Any other comments, Spruce? You're fine?
Yeah, I just think that what we're trying to do is just close the loophole that was created by the town maintaining and the select board, where they labeled a private-public partnership instead of just a private erosion control project on a public beach. So I think really what it was on, just a few words, we're trying to change this to tighten up and let democracy, you know, let it go to town meeting for our use of our beaches.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak?
We have three select board people here. Do you have opinions on this?
Well, certainly they have opinions.
Well, do you want to add anything to the discussion, as we consider it?
I was waiting to hear what the staff response was to this, to be honest. And if there's none, then it may have to be.
Looks like no staff response. Matt, floor's yours.
I think, and I've said this in the newspaper, I think you guys should be looking at what the impact of, the total impact of this is. I think it's clear what the original intent was, was to stop this, you know, back in the day. It is to stop something specific now. I'm not a big fan of erosion control or of rocks, but, you know, back when we were negotiating four or five years ago, in good faith, you know, I was the swing boat that changed it from them appealing 4,000 square feet and possibly getting rocks, which I think in Boston, I don't trust it. I think the fix was in. And putting in a much smaller geotube, which can absolutely be pulled out. And we can argue whether they actually have or not, but, you know, that was the choice that we made at the time. I think if the Concom, my guess, and I won't speak for my other selectmen, but I think if the Concom says that this isn't working and hears right and can't do this, I would be surprised if they licensed it. I think that you guys have to take into consideration what is, you know, it's fine to say, "Well, the town will pay for this." You know, and we can go and we can just pay for these things if we have to do them. But part of what we worked out was the town didn't have any financial responsibility in this case. And so that's something to be thinking about. It's difficult, as anyone who's fallen cheap on road does, it's difficult to abandon a road. And, you know, and the town has a lot of responsibilities with that. So if and when that happens, in some section up there, the town is going to be on the hook for that. You know, the town wasn't prepared, you know, three years ago to take that road out and put a new road in when, you know, a bunch, 20 feet, 15 feet were gone that winter. I don't think the town is, you know, no offense, I don't think the town's any better prepared right now to deal with that issue. So the other part of all this, when I look at it, is, so I worry about, you know, right now it's cooperative, but if it isn't cooperative, there's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of rain core and a lot of expenses. When we negotiated the alternative access, it was half a million dollars each to two property owners to have a road go down there, align with their property. That's what was agreed upon. I can't imagine what it's going to be to go through all of those property owners' properties. And so, but I can guarantee that they will not be happy and cooperating with us. So that's a concern that you guys should put on a piece of paper and understand and figure out. I've asked for that from the staff on camera for two years, you know. But at this point, I think the boards are you, and they can correct me if they don't agree. The board's view is kind of this is going to go to town meeting, and this is popular with the populace, and, you know. And I'm not going to fight it. I'm not going to die on that hill. But I'd like to think that we've done a rigorous process. There is, what else? You know, my contention is that we own, you know, my contention, which again, we haven't looked at, but my contention is that we own all our beaches. And we aren't taking a big enough view of it. And I think we're looking at just one small piece of it. I contend that Nantucket was part of New York when the public trust document came in. The public trust document was what made the right of access go from the high tide to the low tide. And they did that back then for the benefit of commerce and voting. And that's kind of why we have the, and the only exceptions at that point were fishing and fowling. Prior to that, but we were in New York. We weren't bound by that. So then when Nantucket came into Massachusetts, it was voted at the time under the existing rules and regulations that existed. And then I think 15 or 20 years later, they voted it again at the state ups. We had some issues back in the 50s with ponds, which had something to do with historical rights. And we prevailed on those. They couldn't charge us for fishing licenses. And one of them went to, you know, one state superior court. So I think that those, I think we need to widen our vision as a town and look because that would be moving easements. That would be ownership of all the beaches. And then we could decide what to do with them, one way or the other. And I think that's sort of, you know, that's overturning some of the common ways people think about it, but it's different than we view it right now. So anyway, I just, you know, I think, and the other thing I would change from the original, from the negotiations we did, is I think if we license it again, we should be licensing it and looking at a lot bigger picture. The mistake I think we made then was we sort of just licensed the near parcels. I think we should be, if we even got to that level, we should be looking at how do we, you know, how do we license, you know, how do we ensure that we're able to put roads in when we need to and that the people who are benefiting are not going to fight us as we put those roads in. And I think there's an opportunity, if we do it, to work on that. And my final point is this, what we're seeing, I was in Sconset, and let's be clear, that's what this is about. What we're seeing is planned retreat, and it's not going to look pretty. You know, there is global warming. There is seawall arrives. We're going to be impacted by it. Downtown's going to be impacted. Other neighborhoods, Grand Point's already impacted. The assessment's saying that prices are flat or dropping, and people are not going to buy there as much. And the insurance is going up. It is all coming. And I think what we're seeing, what we're experiencing as a community out there is planned retreat. And it's not very, it's not very much fun. And it's a lot of hard work, and it's a lot of things that we don't really have answers to that the staff is busy and we're busy and don't have time to deal with. So I just, you know, I think it's, I don't think, see this as a panacea. And I think it's going to pass, and fair enough. And if we don't do something, I think five or 10 years from now, the blue slivers, the lamia on are going to be gone. And then what will happen is then the private homeowners will own it. They'll have the right to go to the Concom and try to do what they want, and they're going to install some of this stuff anyway. So I mean, I think, you know, I'm not going to die on this hill, but I think there's a lot of issues to really think about. It's not quite as cotton dry as it's been presented back then. Thank you.
Thank you. Chip?
I'm trying to make my comments narrow to the, oh, pardon. The, we were advised, and I heard from Town Council, that the select board had... The, we were advised and I, I heard from town council that select board had, was within its power to enter into a license agreement with the 40B. And we took that vote to do that, or to, to send the, to, to send it on to Concom for their, for their review. If, if this, you know, and we talked about, if there was an emergency, we'd have to come to the town meeting for funds. In any case, you know, I think it makes sense to have a project like this come to town meeting, whether it's, whether it's, you know, I try to make my decision regardless of who's going to pay for it, because I don't think that really affects the way that really doesn't make any difference. But whether it's paid for by private individuals or paid for by the town, we're going to be funding for that. It makes sense to have those come to town meeting. We had a conversation with town council, we talked about what kind of preparation we should do for the special town meeting for this article. Should we get out the, all the data we've been collecting about the cost of the roads and all those kinds of things? And the conclusion we drove, what we came to was that would be a forum for that, would be the town meeting where this, where a project like this could come forward. But we are spending a lot of time and some money gathering information about what alternative access is going to occur to any attempt of the project not to go forward and become unsuccessful. The, you know, the temporary should to be removed by the people who put it in because it didn't give their extension.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Don?
I, I agree with what my colleagues have said, but I believe in this Volta's town meeting, the way it's being framed. And if Concom approves the current application that's before them, we will negotiate the best funds for our license that we have to communicate and then we will go back to our best plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further hands, any more comment from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're on to Article Two, and I'll welcome David Beck.
Thank you. Article Two, South Shore Road zoning change. My understanding, Diane, here is the opponent. My understanding is that the planning board's public hearing on this was postponed until, may have already taken place.
It started at four thirty.
Oh, okay, so.
Somebody want to run downstairs and find out what happened?
No. I guess, um, do you, um, do you mind just giving us some background on this article?
Um, sure. Do you want to make, um?
I, um, I'll give you the background. I called Tucker Holland because I had some questions about how affordable housing units get put on the docket or the count, I guess. And we had a very long conversation. And I was very clear in that I, where I live, I live at fourteen Trip Drive, which is in the neighborhood. And I've lived there for over twenty years. And I really don't want to see this happening in my neighborhood. This huge hundred and fifty-six unit scares me. I don't like it. So that's why I called. How do we get to the point that we, we're not dealing with this all the time? He said, well, at some point, someone has to come up with some solutions on maybe a compromise to change what is happening. Maybe that's an idea. And I said, well, I personally would like to see it go back to the one acre zoning and the proposed smaller subdivision that was on before the property sold, when the Malcoms owned the property. I know that there was a proposal or, but they were waiting for the zoning to change. And then that didn't happen, as we all know. So I thought, well, could I put it back out there since in light of what's going on? And I hung up with him and I called Andrew Vorse, asking, could I get it on special town meeting? And he said, no, it was closed. He lent me to Rick and Diane. I called Rick. And he told me that they were acquiring signatures to do a special within a special. So I got the language. I went to town clerk. I got the paperwork. In less than two days, I had over a hundred signatures. I would like to say that eighty-five percent of them came from my own neighborhood. I literally just knocked on doors. I told every single person that I'm not part of Tipping Point, although I applaud their efforts in getting the community together. They don't support this. They have their own reasons. I really would just like to give the developer options to change. They, I guess, claim, I don't know the developers. I've not approached them. I don't, I wouldn't know them if I were standing next to them. But for me, this is an option. If this passed at town meeting to zone this as R forty, two sides of this parcel are already at one acre zone. This would give them the option to greatly reduce this scope and still make their developers money. They're developers. They're going to develop it. So that is where I came to this. And here we are. I hopeful. I, there's no guarantees, but it doesn't change anything for them. It gives them the option. To me, this was sort of an olive branch. You know, here's this other option than what you're doing.
Okay. I guess I'm still a little confused. That, so these four lots, built, these four lots are part of certain-
That's, that's the entirety of the property.
Of surfside crosswalk there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it's a total of eight acres currently.
Um, I think it's much larger than that's like twelve or thirteen.
Thirteen.
Oh, so some of these lots are larger than two acres.
Right. Yeah, there's one lot in particular that's much larger.
But if we did this, if town meeting approved this zoning change, there's, we have, there's no, nothing on the other side of that equation from the developers.
I have not approached them. I don't know them.
So.
I don't know. It doesn't hurt anything at this point.
Well, except, I mean, presumably if you're giving something of value, you would like them to respond in some, some fashion.
But the only way they can realize that value would be to not build the forty B. And if they build the forty B, they haven't gotten any value from the zoning change anyway.
Right.
So there's, I mean, the only way they get something from this is if they don't do the thing that people are trying to do.
Right. So she's offering them the incentive to not do it.
Right. So even without an agreement, it would have its effect or it would have no effect at all.
It would have the desired effect.
Right. It can only have its desired effect. It cannot-
Doesn't hurt anything, but it might help something.
Yeah, but they could, but the, but the developers certainly could come and say, we won't do our forty B if you rezone the property.
Yeah.
Sure, they could have.
We, we saw that out here on Old South Road.
But they didn't.
Yeah.
Well, presumably you'd have a, would have been contracted, had a little more teeth in it.
Right. You know, but what, what we did here on Old South Road is we gave them much greater density than what's being proposed here. I mean, personally, I don't think this goes far enough. If this strategy were to work, you'd probably have to give them twenty thousand square foot zoning.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Nothing before voting.
Well, and also that, giving them other building options, it doesn't necessarily help the affordable housing issues. I mean, in terms of putting units on the shy list, you know, the current proposal is still going to, twenty-five percent of them are going to be on the shy list. And if you give them an alternative to build other properties that are not necessarily affordable, but where they could make money by building single family homes or what have you on smaller building lots, you've basically just pushed the affordable housing issue out further again.
But Steve would straighten out their shy list criteria. He would solve a lot of problems. That's a lot to ask.
Mm-hmm. Sea level will take care of it before you can change that. Anybody in the audience that wants to, um, comment? Yeah, Rick?
Just a question, um, maybe the folks behind me will be answering. I always thought there was this rule that you couldn't bring back zoning articles within a certain period of time.
Unless you get a super majority of the planning board to vote for it.
Can you help me with that?
Planning board.
So I assume that has to happen. Is that your understanding, Diane?
Supposed to be going on downstairs. I don't know.
But they would have to go along with the super majority, otherwise it's moot to start with.
So if the planning board were to decide three to two to approve this change, they probably don't have the authority unless they can get a super majority, which would be four of five?
I used that term. I don't know what the rule actually said.
I was told it was two thirds.
Oh, okay. So two thirds is not three of five.
No.
That's sixty percent. Playing with math here.
I'm pretty sure you need four.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Diane.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It seems to me this is something, being obviously you're here, what the planning board has to say.
Yeah. And I wonder what, what moderator would say about changing the zones we're talking about changing to? You know, if you could suggest a different zone. And is anybody fine about that? If somebody were to say, I don't like R forty, I'd prefer it was R twenty. You know, is that within the scope of remon, I guess, Sarah can tell us that.
Steve, I'm pretty sure you'd find the answer is no. People wouldn't have been unnoticed about the, you know, you can have less but not more is usually the rule.
Okay. What if it was R twenty limited and you don't have more dwellings? Okay.
Okay. Moving on, Article Three. Is there somebody who wants to speak to that?
My name's Patrick Taif, for those of you that don't know me. I just prepared something. Just want to say good afternoon to the board members and thank you for your time. I'd like to keep this very simple. Article Three is for the people of Nantucket to have a voice and play a role in how Nantucket will be developed in the future. Just over a year ago, the people of Nantucket voted to not fund the sewer project for Maticat. This in effect played a very large role in not overdeveloping Maticat via how many lots would have been subdivided, creating more buildable lots. The entire island is being overdeveloped. This article will give the voters more control in the future development of Nantucket while alleviating the burden of these decisions on just five people. It's just too great a responsibility for that few. All of our boards, please listen to the citizens, summer residents and year-round residents. In all of my conversations, I have only met one person that is pro-growth. He's probably downstairs right now. And when asking people to sign the petition for this article, I asked first, are you a registered voter? And then are you opposed to irresponsible development? And every voter said, yes. Where can I sign? Thank you, FinCom. I hope you support this article.
So in practical terms, you would basically remove the authority of the sewer commission to make these, which is the currently the board of select, the select board?
I think at the current time, the, the people of Nantucket feel that we're just being overdeveloped. And I think the people need a voice, a greater voice.
Well, I certainly think some of the people on Nantucket think we're overdeveloping. If I can, I count myself as a third person to think that, you know, the growth is not excessive.
Okay. All this does is give people the opportunity to say yes or no to a private developer using our, our property.
Using town property? When you say R, you mean town?
Yeah, the, the, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to-
Yeah. And, and whether it's a town road or a county road, it doesn't make a difference. We haven't lost jurisdiction over the use of county roads.
So wouldn't, wouldn't it, wouldn't it make more sense to have a very specific and enforceable criteria for the sewer commissioners to oversee than to push this into a much more broader and potentially more emotional one way or the other?
I don't-
Approach to, to this? And, and isn't this sort of a back, a backdoor way to, to dealing with growth on Nantucket and not through the other mechanisms that we have, which is principally the planning board?
I think we need to do something right now. I don't think we have time to wait. And, and, and if the people of Nantucket, I mean, if, if you, if any of you were at the ZBA meeting in August, there were eight hundred people in the room that were there because of surfside crossing and, and overdevelopment. I think the people of Nantucket are kind of giving everybody a signal, but our boards have to catch up.
I know the town attorney is, I mean, I tried to read all of what they said, but this doesn't seem any different to me than maybe Article One, where now we're just trying to emphasize that not only the board of selection has the right to make a decision, but with big decisions like this, you want a town meeting to back it up? Am I wrong?
No, that's right. I mean, I don't, I don't think that the vote to bring the sewer to Maticat was all about the cost. I think it was about development as well. This is no cost right now to anyone. This neither supports or denies anything. It just gives the people a right to weigh in on it.
I want to cop to not having thoroughly read John Giorgio's really long response to this. Can somebody summarize for me the reasons why he didn't think this was going to help as much as-
I know it didn't pertain to like small projects, like every week that the electric company comes and asks to cross the road or something. It doesn't pertain to that.
That's not a private developer, so no, it wouldn't. Any resident that has a sewer in front of their house can connect. It doesn't stop anyone.
Forced to connect.
Right.
It's somewhat of a complicated article. And town council has sent at least three emails, pretty lengthy, all of them, about it. But it looks like the bottom line is, I'll just quote from the bottom line. "One could certainly make a sound argument that town meeting does not have any authority to enact a bylaw that intrudes on the executive authority of sewer commissioners to manage and control the municipal sewer system." Certainly one could also argue that general laws grant exclusive authority to sewer commissioners to permit a private party to install sewer lines within a public way. So I think what he's saying is the sewer commissioners have the authority and town meeting cannot legally take it away. Maybe there could also be a town meeting vote. I'm not entirely sure, but they have the authority already to do this. County land may enter into it, but I don't think that's what he's saying. It's more that the sewer commissioners themselves have the authority, county or town land.
Like you said, Article One, we're taking the power to, to, to do that.
Right. I mean, the board of selectmen has the right to enter into leases and licenses for land until it was further restricted, unless it's further restricted. So that's what this hopes to do. The aim of this is to prevent the power.
All right, all right.
And town council's telling us, maybe we don't have the right to do that.
Correct.
I mean, the town council can certainly say that, but it really comes down to what the attorney general says.
Yeah. I totally agree with you there. I'm just trying to figure out what town council's saying. But I agree with you. If we don't try to do it, we won't find out.
My other point, I think that I read and I read it wrongly, but if, if we're hoping that by doing this, we can say no and, you know, sort of sell, sell, sell across and somehow won't be able to hook up, I think we're fine, we will finally lose that estate, you know? And this comes from the, and this is coming from the kind of the housing specialists. It's like us saying, our schools aren't big enough. But they're going to turn around and they're going to say, we don't have enough for the law. We don't care if the schools aren't big enough. That's a draw of the town building in the school. Our roads aren't big enough. Sorry, we better make sure- Our roads aren't big enough, sorry, we better fix your, that's your job. I think this would be a similar thing. We might be able to slow them down for a little while, you know, if we support this, but I don't think, I don't think we will win again, is my impression, someone could correct me, but...
To the extent that this is tailored to try to do something about South Shore Road, which...
This isn't spirited, you know, focused on any one project on Nantucket. And I don't know that there's a project that has any proposals with the town right now for permits for putting sewers in town roads. You know, private developers, that is.
So the surfside crossing is not going to put sewers in private...
I don't know that they've asked for a permit to do that.
So let, just play this out with me, if they ask for a permit to do it. And this gets approved, it has to go to the Attorney General. What, I probably shouldn't ask you to speculate on this, but it would seem to me that the project at Surfside Crossing, with their ability to go into the streets, will go forward anyway. And then we're stuck with, and stuck may not be the right word, but then we have an ordinance that takes the decisions about putting sewers into public roads out of the hands of the sewer commissioners, doesn't fundamentally change what happens at South Shore Road. And we have what may be a ordinance that has secondary and tertiary impacts that are just not, you know, people haven't spent time thinking about or working through. Instead of...
Well, I don't see how this has secondary or tertiary impacts. That's not gonna stop an individual homeowner from connecting to the sewer.
No, but it might, it may very well have an impact upon a, somebody, somebody else.
What people have told me is that, and I've talked to people that have had to spend the money to connect to the town sewer. People that maybe have just put in new Title Fives or the newer technology septic's, that systems that purify the water a little bit more so, you know, spent forty thousand dollars and then they're told the following season, the sewer's coming down your street, you're gonna have to connect to the sewer now at another expense. So it puts an undue burden on a lot of the citizens of Nantucket, to have to connect.
And so you're suggesting the intent of that would also override the requirement that people would have to connect?
Well, if a private developer is able to run a sewer line under any road they want to run it under for, you know, personal gain for their development, it actually has an effect on other people.
Well, I think...
Well, no, I'm saying that it has a, it's an undue expense, you know, a burden to other people.
And what's, no, I was gonna say, on what other people? On other taxpayers, on me as an individual, because I...
Are you talking about the people who have to tie in because the sewer...
People have to tie in, yeah.
And that's been a longstanding requirement in just every single community and...
The size of the district, I mean, regardless of when the pipe gets dragged down your street, the size of the district is created. And those people are in the district because the prior town meeting put them in the district.
It's kind of funny, because we argued for years for people out there wanting to be in the district and we said they can't be because the pressure pipe runs through there and you know way for them to connect. So that was an argument to tell them no. Now all of a sudden, these guys show up and we're just gonna blow down the road with the pipe, so everything's okay. No one sued us back then, we denied those people.
What did, have you spoken to David Gray about this?
I personally have not spoken to David Gray. I've listened to him at zoning board meetings and select board meetings.
It'd be interesting to understand his point of view on this.
Jim?
I sure want to weigh in, but for those who think this would be an impediment to surfside crossing, my understanding from Town Council is that this would be just another opportunity for them to private developer to ask for a labor, because they're past. And would you like to be contacted by, uh, you know, to allow the project to avoid? Because otherwise it would make the project actually, um...
Time to move.
So just putting that out there, I know there are a lot of other reasons they can't have a sponsor in particular for this, but it's a concept, um, subservient, my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a, we are an electoral process that appoints, that elects the members of the select board and ends up being the sewer commissioners and it seems to me that process works pretty well. I think taking decisions away from the select board and putting it in front of town meeting just makes the process more cumbersome and I'm not sure I see any reason that it needs to be done this way. I mean, I appreciate you and your group and your position.
I'm not sitting here today representing a group.
Well, your...
At all.
At all. I just don't think this is necessary.
Well, I, I, I'm kind of agree, but I also think it's really interesting that there's pockets of our citizens who think that voting on these things should go to the meeting and not be handled in a traditional manner. I mean, that definitely says something. I mean, it's not just one thing, we've heard this a few times.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what exactly we're trying to get to Town Meeting. Because, you know, the sewer maps are voted at Town Meeting. You know, we've decided who's in the district and who's not in the district and we can amend it every year, we amend it twice a year.
But this is, so let's just take and listen to this about that project, the Surfside Crossing. A lot of people on that road aren't in the sewer. They're not interested, but if they run that pipe down that road, they're still gonna have to hook up.
Not if they're not in the sewer district. You have to be in the sewer district and it has to be in front of your street for you to be compelled to tie in.
But if you're not in sewer district and it's in front of your street, I'm pretty sure they're gonna make the hook up.
Not, not unless they expand the sewer...
I don't...
Not unless they expand the sewer district, which would be a vote at Town Meeting. And I think it's not just a majority, I think it's a two-third majority. Because it's a zoning change. Well, there's the guideline, the checklist, but I don't think that's it. I mean, it's a map change and I think that takes two thirds of what.
It's two thirds if it wasn't able to support the selection of sewer managers.
And it's a majority if it does.
I mean, I, I hope you're aware that what it is, it's just technicalities. Nobody's been just working a terrible job. But isn't it appropriate on some of these big things to have it broken in that way? Yeah, it brings it messy.
I'm all for making things messy, but I think that, you know, the answer you want is already available to you. You know, if you want to come back and say the sewer districts are too large, we have expanded them significantly in the last few years. If you want to come back and say they should be a lot smaller, then you can do that. There's a mechanism for that, it's the exact same mechanism, it's just a different way to get at it. You know, you don't have to say, well, now every private developer needs to come back to Town Meeting. I don't think the Attorney General is likely to support that anyway. But they would have no issue with you shrinking the sewer district and have any issue with us expanding it. Or you could say, certain zones should only have single residences. You know, no more second dwellings, no more tertiary dwellings. Those are different ways that you can get at the same problem and that authority already rests with the people that you want to have this authority. You know, Town Meeting gets to make that call. It's just maybe an easier way to get at what you're trying to do.
No, I think the people do get to have a say. And when we voted the funding down to run the sewer to Matikit, that was the voice of Nantucket having a say. This is just an extension of that.
Right, but if you don't want them to have sewer, I mean, eventually, if it's in the sewer district, somebody's going to pull the sewer line down. If you don't want them in the sewer district, just vote them out, shrink the sewer district.
Any other comments? Any comments from Patrick?
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I will close the public hearing on Special Town Meeting Two. Do we want to have this discussion next week on where we're going with these?
I just wanted to ask a question of the board members, because I couldn't be here at the last meeting where you took up the articles for the first time meeting.
Yeah.
I forget which number article it is, the one that we determined that we can only have the number of recreational marijuana dispensaries that's at twenty percent of the year-round off-premise liquor licenses? I didn't hear that there was a question asked about that. What's the rationale for limiting to twenty percent? Yeah, I've heard that it's a state thing, but what is the state thing?
So liquor licenses are connected to the population, do you want to get something connected?
Yeah, but why, why is it twenty percent and not twenty-five percent or fifty percent or a hundred percent? So why do we have to, Patrick?
The proposal is for the limitation at that level. And the thing is, the whole thing was that we start helping with the limitation or it becomes a desire to expand the number, is it easier to expand or to...
Yeah, I guess like, I forget what the number was, somebody in the room probably knows that percentage of people who said, give us pot stores, and now we're like, okay, but only two.
You decided we might go well there?
Yeah. I think there's enough demand for two, so...
Yeah, but I think...
I would just kind of, the board had extensive discussion about this earlier perhaps, one month, or then...
And is there somebody who said if we have thirty percent, that's too many? And it's likely to cause problems in some way or another?
As many people know that, starting, I don't know, starting with the roads, well, it's easier to have them in, but...
Um, frankly, I'm not sure that I'm going to vote for this at Town Meeting, but I thought that it would be a completely off chance in the world. I mean, they also discussed whether we should promote the alcohol or not, I mean, I haven't yet. But we know everyone, there's some options for it, yeah. You think we could do a more, you know, there's not...
I just don't know why it's being limited to any percentage. Or if it has to be limited, why that percentage? It just seems arbitrary, but, you know, I wasn't at the board of select meeting, so maybe somebody made a cogent argument that there's serious negative repercussions to having more. But I don't know what they are, so that's why I'm asking.
There's also a lot of physical limitations as to where you can actually place it.
Well, that's what I mean, the zoning and the cost of real estate already has several serious limiting factors and there's lots of limiting that has to go into it, so I didn't understand the reason.
A couple things, if you saw the performance from the one, um, on Children's College, did it would be a source of significant tax dollars on an annual basis? Something like driving that people along the water, the water? It's a lot of public, high, not, so there's a lot of money.
Really? There was a lot of tax.
There's a lot of money, and then secondly, there wasn't another, um, you know, it wasn't like what Steve says, what they said is, you had to have a lease point, just like, they didn't say, well, we also could maybe, maybe for eight, you know, eighty percent we would waste, this is good, and there wasn't any, anything else that, you know, to tie along to it.
Right, but when they say like, at least this, it just, it seemed like there was a lot of public support to get this. And now we're like, but we're gonna give you the minimum amount that we have to give.
Well, I'll weigh in, if I, I think, yeah, I think right now the island has a, a pretty severe, uh, binge party problem. Uh, on some of our biggest weekends, we get a lot of business, but the police can rarely keep up with it. Uh, there's a culture out here that, you know, is, it's very different than, you know, what I remember growing up. Not to say people live on the beach and, you know, drink too much, but it's very different. Uh, kids that come from all of these coast, and they, you know, my thought is, from a, you know, sort of economic standpoint was we want to be known as the, you know, if we get, if we, if we're on Monday and we, and it's just a zoning change, and the owners may live in other areas, if we're on Monday and we got a bunch of them, we became known for that as that positive thing. I've spent a lot of time on that stuff and it's working, but they're struggling. And they're not, you know, and there's a lot of games that are being played, signage and all sorts of different aspects. I think that, you know, it's easier if we, you know, in my opinion, it's easier to control and load it out, if it makes sense, than it is, it's easier to let the, you know, let the horses out and get back in the barn. And I just think that we, you know, sort of, and there are a lot of, there are conflicts. When my good friends, I didn't realize, my dad's journal, my good friends came up, started telling me about his son and his son's friends and, you know, they're going, one's going back to the second town meeting and it's lots of law. And, you know, and it's the largest growing segment of the substance abuse sort of treatment now is marijuana addiction, so a lot of these cases start at young ages. So we have some, some of the teachers and some of the, you know, some of those people were concerned, not concerned enough to say, no, we don't want it, but concerned enough to say, you know, let's make sure we do this carefully.
So how does two stores instead of three stores have any effect on that?
Well, it may not have much of a effect. Here's one way it would might though, I've met with all of the people who want to do it and, you know, and a couple of them told, have told me, and I believe them, that they think it's gonna shake out and it's gonna end up with two, two very well-run profitable. And if we have three or four or five, and I know that they're, you know, protecting themselves too, but if we have three or four or five, they're worried that there's gonna be, you know, people are gonna be cutting corners and trying to make a go of it, because the expense of doing it is so high, the rules are so tough, all the other aspects of the app. And that, if you actually read through the Aspen Times and some other places in Colorado, you know, you'll find that that is some of the experiences that they're having. They're having issues when there's, you know, when there's two months of something. So I do think, you know, I do think, you know, I think it's, I'm gonna support, you know, to towards, I think it's a prudent first step into it. Uh, you know, I think it's, I think it's something that should be supported this far.
Let me ask that, about a month ago I asked if all these products are gonna be identified as marijuana, are they gonna be gummy bears or brownies, am I gonna know whether or not I'm taking a drug? Are we gonna do something about that or is it stay? So just like a pack of cigarettes, I'm gonna be able to know, this is a cigarette, this is a... Okay?
And the package is a very plain looking, and I can barely open it, that case, it's almost impossible.
So, Patrick, even though, regardless of the program that I've, whatever the question I mentioned, you know, I, I thought of something, I have to bring my, my values, my values, my beliefs to it. Uh, and then just a couple of things, I think that super dense schools, they're very hazardous, um, speaking, about children, in one case, bringing mistaken level of marijuana for lunch trees. Yeah, I mean, it's low, it's healthy now, it is. Like, it's more like, you know, obviously the parents that have those problems, it's very... So that kind of stuff just kind of, I mean, so, so those are, so, you know, the more health is given to some issues, you've got the different settings, you've got the car, you've got the control, you've got the, to the island, that will, that this, that happen to see, testing for this product, uh, because it's a huge, uh, number of... The power is going to be tested for, or the product will be tested for, so, there's really no, there's no way to calculate the cost. Of the, of the, of the degree, I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's like describing an island and not having enough, um, programs that you, you know, you, so, so, all of that, my biggest respect is to be able to, um, believe in that, so I just, I, I want to...
Can we move on?
Well, yeah.
Sure, yeah, everybody else is finished, we're finished. Thank you very much for sharing.
Article ten, we is the town peer, um, that... Um, Article ten, we is the town peer, um, that was on the, that's in special town meeting one. And we, um, passed on by on that, um.
We have, um, a kind of a virus plan, I'm not sure, which, which we do this, we do this, we do this, and this time, we would ask you to, um, take no action, I'm not, you know, I'm kind of, I'm pretty much, uh, we're involved in the new, the COVID box, we want to repair them, we want to put them back in the store, while currently, there's a lot of big specs that have been standard designed, so, um, that we'd allow to do at this point, so we can do that, and hopefully, appropriate funds will be, or, or repair it, we expect.
And you can do all the repair, the temporary floating pier with, in your budget?
The road. And also, I did, sometime, I have assistance, so you have the, the funds.
Or the. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to take no action on Article ten? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much for the explanation, uh, what do you guys wanna do about, uh, special town meeting two, um, Articles one, two, and three? We can do whatever you want.
Okay, so why don't I take up discussion on Article one?
Okay. No, I'll recuse myself.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Then I'll ask for a motion. Motion to do what? Motion to.
Well, do we want the town attorney to come and explain what to us, or no, oh, we don't have time for that?
I'm not sure there's much more to explain.
Okay.
I mean, I would say, I mean, the motions, I would, I I support this, right, because I think that, um, the argument regarding eighty, all those sections being outdated, makes sense to me, and I think that, um, we should be in charge of what's happening on the coastal land, I do, and I think that it's fine for the voters to weigh, hang on now, we're gonna spend the money, we're gonna fix it, it's okay, it's already fixed, with the intent on the original, like, the original bylaw, and.
Okay, so we're not debating the content of the bylaw, we're debating scr- scratching out private to non-governmental body.
No. Right. Right.
That's the, that's the actual motion.
And the piece that says accept this divided, paragraph C doesn't really mean anything, because paragraph C's expired.
So, motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I mean, given that the bylaw already exists, and even under the current language, you would, you'd have to find a situation where it's a fairly narrow descriptor that the select board could strike an arrangement with a public, private, or some other, um, entity that slips in the, in the, um, in the gap, um, I mean, this is really just sort of plugging that last hole, you're right, you might understand any of this, you know.
Sure.
Even though personally, I I I consider my other comments on the other article, and I think the select board has, is elected officials, and they should have the right to make these sort of rankings.
And, well, they don't have to do the lease in the first place, this is, it's a stopgap on this one.
Right, this basically forces town meeting to have an opinion on, uh, non-governmental project.
After it's concluded by the select board.
Well, yeah, what I, yeah, right.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in both.
Two opposed.
We got.
Or, or two. Okay, David?
Article two, proposed zoning change, so short, right? Got a motion on that?
Are we gonna wait till?
Well, we're gonna wait till the planning board wins in.
I guess we were, well.
We were, just, are we still going to wait?
Not in a month.
Let me ask it that another way, Mr. Chairman, are we still gonna wait till the planning board wins?
Pardon me?
They're still delivering.
Okay, so that's a not today.
We're getting real time updates.
Yeah.
We're getting real time updates to try to help out.
Uh, Article three, um, we'll do, we'll do that, uh, we're scheduled on October third, uh.
For half an hour before the, yes.
So I think we can take that one up.
You're, you're one thirty, pre town, come to.
Pre town.
Two thirty.
Two thirty, oh, okay, we have an hour.
As long as we have a, as long as we have a quorum, if not, it's gonna get done on.
I'll be here on the third.
Okay, uh, well, if we don't have enough people, we'll do it at the night, you know, the night of town meeting, so, love all the planning board heads.
Okay.
Um, how about Article three, conveyance, um, sewer?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, is there a second?
I don't know about this one, I might do a second, I really do, because I think that it's, uh, it's driven from, uh, through the people who do want to limit the development, but I'm not sure I think it's the right tool.
Correct.
And I think that putting stuff in front of the town to vote sometimes becomes a popularity contest, and I, I think that the issue that it's trying to address has other reasons in which we can address it, even though I tend to agree with the fact that it needs to be addressed, I just, I'm not sure this is the right one, right now.
I mean, I sort of feel the same, I mean, I, you know, I I, as I said to Mr. Tate from there, obviously, there are a lot of people that are supporting his group, and this whole sense of excessive development, I don't happen to share that view, but, um, and I think that we have plenty of water capacity, and plenty of sewage capacity, and many other issues, but, um, and in the end, I sort of agree with Joe, I'm not sure this is the mechanism to try to slow it down.
So we do not have a second on Cliff's motion. So it's going to die for lack of a second, or do we have another motion that somebody would like to make?
I would like to make a motion to take no action.
Second.
What's the difference between, in this case, taking?
Ask every year.
I know, I know, and I feel compelled to ask it one more time.
Well.
Well, it's it's gonna come before, it's gonna come before special town meeting, I, you know, I, I, I'm not sure that the finance committee on this particular subject has to come forward with an opinion, you know, we can certainly say, take no action, and let the voters decide what they want to decide at town meeting.
But you know, I'll be able to work with the FAA, well.
Right, and he's got a good chance of his passing, because there's a sentiment that is about.
Absolutely.
So I don't feel like we need to say no, I don't feel like we need to say yes.
Well, what I, I would weigh in and say, um, I have a slightly different viewpoint, uh, if we do not think that this is the right mechanism, then we should say no, not take no action, take no action is sort of.
It's a polite way of saying no, most of the time.
But in this particular case.
We're all in ducking.
We are ducking.
I mean, I think, you know, we're, we all have different viewpoints as to whether there is or isn't enough, too much development, or inappropriate development, and all of that, uh, I think, to me, this goes to, you know, are we going to continue to just sort of, if we don't like the answers that we're getting from our elected officials, we'll just continue to work around them, and have a smaller group, you know, have a relatively small group of people who aren't going to, quite frankly, I don't think are gonna be any more informed about the issues that town meeting, than our elected bodies are gonna be, in fact, they're gonna be less informed, and that's where we're gonna end up having these kinds of decisions made, rather than living our sewer commissioners in this case, that's my viewpoint on the issue.
I guess, may I ask this question, someone did, that, um, with the elected officials, what responsibility do they have when I apply for the permit to go run a pipe on that little south road, what criteria do they have to accept it or deny it, or do they have to say it at all, in a sense?
Pretty much, are you in the district, or are you not in the district?
No, I'm gonna lay a pipe down the street, so how do they stop it?
Well, if you're in the district, they'll let you lay the pipe, if you get the proper road opening, enclosure permits, and you promise to resurface it, and you make your contribution to the sewer maintenance fund, or, you know, there's a number of things they can do, but if you're in the district, they'll let you do it, most people in the district will wait for the pipe to come down the street, 'cause it's very expensive to put it in, and, um.
So there's no real criteria to say no, of being in the district?
Right.
Well, that's a big criteria.
It's a pretty big criteria, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's a criteria, because it's based on more than a decade worth of studies, and reports that have been provided to the town, and then voted on at several town meetings, you know.
Yeah. Well, and then all these specs.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big, it's a big.
There's any area, they have to make sure it's the right size, and will cover it, between that area and the.
Right, any area between where the sewer exists today, and where the applicant wants to go, you usually have to provide the right pipes to cover everybody else, so there's a savings to the town in that regard, you know, there's reasons why it's a, it's a good thing for neighbors, or at least for the town, who might otherwise have to install the pipe themselves. And that's why I think the appropriate mechanism here, if the idea is to keep people off of sewer, is to go and try to amend the maps, but we have to go back and look at the underlying science that got us to where we are, and we didn't just pick properties out of a hat and say, these guys get sewer, it was because there's, you know, certain areas we don't want septic.
Right, but I've learned in the law, once you give somebody something, and I don't see, you take it back once you gotta pay them.
I don't think we've ever tried, well, and to my own way, we never tried to reduce the size of the septic, uh, excuse me, of the sewer districts, I don't know if anybody here remembers us doing that before.
They take the finance.
Yeah, I, you know, if Andrew were here, he'd say, you know, you can't use public utilities as a way to control growth, zoning is more appropriate, and I, you know, I think there's a good reason why we created the R five L and R ten L, where you can't have second dwellings, you know, these limited subsections of the existing zoning districts, and maybe that's what we need, so we don't have secondary and tertiary dwellings everywhere, if that's what people want, um, but keeping people on septic where they're proved to be fatal, you know, maybe it's the right way to go, and I think that's what the effect that this would be, you know, eventually, everybody who's in these districts is gonna get on sewer anyway, so, anyway, also, uh, I think there's language in here, it's, again, a little difficult for me to parse all the words, but it says for sewer or other purposes, um, and it's not, you know, other sewer-related purposes, so for any reason, we need to go into the street, um, unless you're right in front of a, um, a town in Nantucket on Sewer Line, I can't apply to get into a town street, and there's other reasons that you might need to, you know, it could be a water line, it could be cable, it could be a lot of things, and this, at least my reading of it, would exclude you from doing that, without going to town meeting.
So there is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to take no action, are you ready to vote on that?
It was seconded?
I did.
Joe seconded.
Start too soon.
I missed that one.
Well, I mean, obviously, it's still in discussion, I mean, you can vote it down if, if, you know, or or draw the motion, I suppose, and, um, if you draw the motion, and, David, I take it you're arguing and playing the seat for a negative, for a conflict.
Or, you know, vote it down if you were to go to. Uh, I, I, if that were the motion, I would vote for it, not to adopt. But, but I'm only one vote.
And you think. Right, but you're pretty clear that this this will limit people's ability to go into the street for other things.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the way I read it, that's what I think it does, but I wish there was somebody here who could pig more on.
It's pretty, yeah.
It's the street.
I don't know, when he was just saying that, well, that's what we were just saying, there are cable, or electric, or a water line, they would have to come before the town meeting, now, if that was true, then we should, we should vote to knock, to knock it off.
I go back to the point that Seda made earlier, whereas we have zoning, we have many mechanisms in place to already limit things, so I'm struggling with adding this on.
Yeah, this, this isn't just public roads either, this is anything, it says public wa- it says private ways.
When we have.
Private ways.
Easement areas, I mean, this could be on your own property, you've got an easement area from some old subdivision, and now you can't, you know, drag water down that easement area.
Oh, yeah. In state law, where it supersedes, uh, well, you only can feed, there's a difference between.
Oh, it, I, you know, I, you know, Pat, um, Pat Tate said, you know, this has to go to the attorney general, and it may not be upheld there, but, you know, that's what this says, this doesn't limit itself to public ways and streets.
Okay.
It doesn't.
We have a.
We're back, we're back to home base.
Would you like to substitute your motion?
Doesn't mean to just sewers, then you're right about yourself, I think.
Where where is it limited to just sewers, 'cause I see four.
You mean, well, why don't, why don't we, why don't we bring it up, for non-government, uh, motion, because.
Not this. Yeah, are you gonna make that motion?
More than a motion.
I don't understand the determination, private ways on land owned by the town, private property way or other purposes.
Over these, when it's.
I think this is just.
Guys, let's, so we have, Joe's made a motion not to adopt, is there a second?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, um, it's.
Peter?
I'm just trying to understand, um, the way this was written, is this, is it the intent to be just sewers, or is the intent to be more general than than just sewers?
Right, so so Peter's interpretation is different than mine, so I want people to read it for themselves, I don't want to be responsible for somebody not saying that's not what's written.
I think if two people who are used to looking at things like this can't understand the intent of this, I would suggest it, if it was to be applicable and able to be executed and enforced, it should be tighter, so the fact that the two of you can't come to the same interpretation makes me even more reluctant to approve something that whilst it might have excellent intent, isn't able to be, I'm just saying, so.
Yeah, I I I think Peter's right, and this is much more narrow, um, than I described, I think this is limited to sewer and sewer-related things, but it's not limited to public ways. So this would have to do with an easement, would have to do with a private road, but it is limited to sewers, lines, pumps, mains.
For easements on private, which by the town.
We want the cable, we want the power.
But not limited to private ways on land owned by the town, private ways, private roads, and town, and.
For the purpose of installing, operating, using, maintaining, wasting, or.
I know, but.
Okay.
Anyway.
Did that constitute our discussion?
All right. Okay, so.
I mean, I, I mean, you know, the other alternative is, and this is like punting, but, you know, John had three lengthy memos on this, so this is not a, um, you know, I personally don't feel at all qualified to interpret this, other than to say, I don't think we should take power away from the sewer commissioners, and devolve power to, on items like this, to town meeting, where I think we we run the risk of getting less.
Wouldn't have to be approved by the sewer commission before, like, the town meeting?
That's not what it says.
I don't, I don't know.
But it just seems like they have them out, 'cause all you have to do is be in the city district, and you're on a pipe.
At all.
It's already been said, it's logic, Boolean algebra, that's okay.
So, but let's think, let's think beyond that, so in this, but this is gonna go before town meeting, there's a popular contingency in town that perceive that this is the way to limit some of the development of the forty acres, whether or not that's true or not, that people believe that, the second piece of this is that it's gonna have to go before the attorney general, and all that, you know, the attorney general is not gonna accept this, so what's our responsibility?
Well, I think that's, David said what he did, I think we have a responsibility to stand up and say, we don't think this is well crafted, we don't think this is the mechanism by which to limit this growth, doesn't believe, there are other other ways to achieve purposes, if people wanna try to limit growth and development on Nantucket, this isn't the way to go.
Can can we say that, or?
Yeah, I think we should, if we're gonna take a negative vote, I think.
I don't know, I think we should say that.
Yeah.
Didn't word it out, you know.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I don't personally know, you know, I think bigger issues, devolving authority, waiting in the sort of. Yeah. Yeah.
And the sewer commissioners.
And the sewer.
Sewer commissioners, sorry, sewer commissioners. Yeah.
Do we have a vote to, not to adopt? Probably with a comment, and we'll have to...
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Four minutes, five minutes.
But we are gonna...
One, two, three, four, six, seven, eight.
But we're gonna make a note.
Yes. Can we get a little help on a note?
Sure.
I, I...
I'll, I'll write a few sentences and send it to you.
Okay, Joe, Joe will do something. The gist basically, let's make sure we're all clear on this. We agree with the gist of it. How would you write, I mean, based on what you for?
I, I think it's about re-appropriating the power that rests currently with the sewer commissioners, so I think that's the...
I think that's the highest level issue, is that it, it devolves, it takes power away from the sewer commissioners that is currently effectively executed or, uh, built. And then I think secondarily, it's, that it's not the right tool to limit, if, if limiting growth is your goal, this is not the right tool to do it.
And there are mechanisms in pla- and third, there are mechanisms in place today to achieve limits of growth by doing things like changing the sewer district, changing the zoning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that can be, that are voted on at town meeting. So if the town does have a voice on these topics today.
And I would add the fourth, notwithstanding that the proponents said it was not in response to surfside crossing. We can leave that aside. It's likely, as town councilants said, that it would not survive, um, well, or, the, you know, the...
E, the appeal to...
Appeal process, and then we're left with basically something that I don't think we know of a secondary intersharing impact of. I think there's, there's probably more in this than we can come to, can understand in thirty minutes.
One of those things is that the town will be on the hook to pay for things that developers otherwise would have paid for themselves.
So I'm, I'm...
It's not the mechanism to fight for, to develop it, that's the bottom line.
No, the mechanism to fight for 2B development is build affordable housing.
Okay, we accept? I'll, I'll write something, I'll send it to David and then, then I'll... That would be great. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Great, okay. We'll skip committee reports, I don't think there are any anyway.
What?
Uh, I'll have to do a chair. Our next meeting is on the third, before we do that, is on the third here. Uh, a notice will go out on, on the third, but I think it's one thirty. Okay, so that's next Wednesday. Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Weekend?
We really don't wanna be wrong this week. When do your activities for the weekend start?
Uh, they start in forty minutes.
Oh, that's right.
Fifteen minutes.
You have a big wedding this week.
A big wedding.
What's the wedding?
My oldest son is getting married.
On Antucket?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Harry.
Is this in the, um, the hospital, hospital? Did they, they said they're, they're not gonna be up, they're leasing actually, that lease is over. Yeah, I mean, I'm a...
Yeah, no, it's...
Hasn't already happened?
No, it is, it really is. It's nice that you can get Murray. Thanks, we, thank you very much.
Level four rest time, we were doing, you know, reimbursement, so, sufficient.
This is what I...
So reimbursement, something like that.
We have to wait here, then we...
So what we... I, I, I didn't, we, we, we were per se.
Well, I'm putting together side by side right now to see if it's gonna change, like, how everything comes out.
So anyway, that led us to...
Level across that everything's gonna stay like this, but I just wanna make sure that we don't lose sight of...
And given that all we've...